Accept our thanks for this beautiful day and all of its blessings. We ask for your guidance, strength, and wisdom in our deliberations this evening. May we be challenged to make this a better world and to always do our best. In your son's name, we ask for this blessing. Amen.
of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with everything and justice for all.
We have six members present tonight. We have a call and announcements.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In the planning update, I noted that the Board of Supervisors would like the Planning Commission to join them on June 14th at 6:30 PM for a joint public hearing. And this is to consider comprehensive plan amendment and rezoning, or excuse me, zoning amendments related to the new proffer law. So the Planning Commission would need to vote to hold a special meeting that night. It's June 14th at 6:30 PM. I will be giving the Board an update on May 24th at their meeting on the proposed amendments, and then I'll follow up with the Planning Commission at your June 1st meeting with the same presentation.
Any questions, comments? I have a motion. Head and vote, please. Is unanimous. So we'll see you on the June 14th at 6:30 PM.
Yes.
Anything else?
That's it.
Next on the agenda is review and approval of the minutes of April 20th, 2016. I trust everybody's had a chance to review the minutes. Any questions or comments, corrections at this time? May I have a motion to accept the minutes?
So may.
Second?
Second.
Go ahead and vote, please. Again, unanimous. Thank you very much. They're approved. Unfinished business. Nothing on the agenda for that. Review and approval of plat P-16-002.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. This is preliminary plat approval for Mallet Landing Sections 3 and 4. Mallet Landing Section was rezoned in 2009. Sections 3 and 4 are the final two sections with 64 single-family attached units for a total of 150 lots. The parcel is 13 acres served by public water and sewer. The site lies within the primary development boundary. It's identified as tax parcel 381C in the Lee Hill Voting District. The preliminary plat meets all the requirements and therefore is ready for approval. This is an overall view of the preliminary plat area outlined in red. The orange line in the center is the dividing line between the two sections. The blue oval on the screen is a tot lot. And the reddish area just about the middle is the emergency access that was proffered as part of the rezoning. This is a blow-up of the area, Sections 3 and 4. As you can see, the orange line is the dividing line between the sections. And then there's the 20-foot fire access, as I noted, and then this area is the tot Happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Mr. Chairman, if I may please. Leon, this is the same that we approved in 2009, no changes. Am I correct?
That is correct.
Okay. With that, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve P-16-0002.
I second it. Any other questions, comments? Proceed to a vote, please. It is unanimous. Next, we have our rezoning package.
This is a request to rezone four acres from Commercial 2, Office 1, and Office 2 to Commercial 3 with proffers to allow for a mini warehousing facility. The subject property consists of 13 separate parcels with frontage on both Wright's Lane and Old Plank Road. The C2 and O1 zoned portion of the property, which is located right here with the frontage on Wright's Lane and a small portion right here with frontage on Old Plank Road, that was the subject of a rezoning that was approved in 2009 for a 34,000-square-foot commercial building. The zoning actually prohibited the property from developing as a mini warehousing facility along with a few other uses, and it restricted access to Old Plank Road. The O2 zoned portion of the property, which are these parcels in the brighter orange and have frontage on Old Plank Road, that was the result of a rezoning that was approved in 1988. The expectation at that time is it would be developed for an office building, but none of the O2 uses were prohibited, so it could develop as any of the permitted uses in the O2 zoning district, and it did allow for an access on Old Plank Road. You'll see the existing development along Wright's Lane and Plank Road is commercial to the west and to the east. There are a few residential properties remaining just before the four-mile, or the five-mile fork area. The existing development on Old Plank Road remains residential in this area, but this entire section is designated on the comprehensive plans' future land use map as employment Staff does recommend approval of the application based on the consistency with the comprehensive plan and the existing development. The county attorney has approved the proffer statement that was included in your packet. That was one of the outstanding issues that was noted in the staff report, but that has been approved as deformed. And the only other outstanding item is that the residential community has expressed some concerns with adding an access point and that additional traffic onto Old Plank Road. This is the GDP. The proposal includes 13 storage buildings with the main access to the property from Wright's Lane. There will be a secondary point of access from Old Plank Road. Both of these access points will be gated. The main access to the property will be the Wright's Lane access. That gate will remain open during normal business hours. The gate on Old Plank Road will be closed and only accessible through some sort of pass key code for customers only. The entire site will be fenced with wrought iron fencing located predominantly along the Wright's Lane frontage, and the remaining fencing will be made of a solid vinyl construction material. The applicant has requested a modification to the required transitional screening requirement. These requirements are designed to buffer properties for more intense use. As we've said, there's some residential uses still here located along Old Plank Road. The adjacent property owners have agreed to this modification, which would reduce the transitional screening to 12 feet with a 6-foot fence. And then these properties specifically wanted to have landscaping as well, so it'll have the 6-foot fence and landscaping. Based on the property owners being in agreement with this modification, staff didn't identify any concerns with such a modification, and it's not uncommon to see these types of waivers or modifications, particularly when the area is designated for a similar land use, which is, in this case, the employment center. The applicant has put forth several proffers. The first is a commitment to develop in conformance with the generalized development plan. They have limited the total square footage of building area to 72,000 square feet. They have proffered dedication of right-of-way along both Wright's Lane and Old Plank Road. They have also proffered to construct a right-turn lane on Old Plank Road. This is not required. This is something they've put forth to address the concerns of the residential community on Old Plank Road for any, to prevent any potential backups that may occur as customers are accessing the gate to enter the site. There were a few questions about that particular language and when that access on Old Plank Road would be installed. The applicant has indicated they intend to phase this development with starting on the Wright's Lane portion, putting that access in, and those first eight buildings, and then later on doing, fully developing the site and doing the access on Old Plank later. The right-turn lane construction, the way the language is written, is, would only be constructed when that access on Old Plank Road is put in. So there's nothing to prohibit with this language, there's nothing to prohibit the applicant from doing the phased development that he would like to do. The applicant does proffer the site fencing materials will be the wrought iron and the vinyl, the solid vinyl that we, that I mentioned earlier. The minimum height of the fence would be 6 feet with a maximum height of 8 feet, and the applicant has restricted the building height to no more than 25 feet. The applicant has explained that these buildings shouldn't be more than 12 or 14 feet. The minimum of 25 feet is just to build in some flexibility with the design. This is restricted from what's allowed in the C3 ordinance, which is 75 feet.
Kim, you said a minimum or a maximum of 25?
Maximum, sorry, maximum. As I mentioned, the residential community has expressed concerns with access on Old Plank Road. It is important to note, we talked about, that the property was currently approved for an Office 2 uses with direct access on Old Plank Road. Staff has estimated that the office use would generate additional 55 trips per day, and that's actually a very conservative estimate based on a 5,000-square-foot office building. An office twice that size could potentially be located on that portion of the property and would generate even more traffic, as well as there's other uses that could develop under that O2 permitted uses that would develop even more, or would generate even more traffic. The applicant has proffered to install a turn lane, and they have the restricted access on Old Plank Road for customers only, so there's no concern about cut-through traffic from Old Plank to Wright's Lane and Plank Road. And our traffic engineer estimates that 28 trips will be generated by the proposal onto Old Plank Road. The majority of the traffic is going to use that Wright's Lane access point. And again, that's, that was a conservative estimate as well. So with that, staff is supportive of the proposal as proposed, including that access on Old Plank Road. And that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
From the applicant?
Todd Phillips with Freeland Engineering. Kimberly did a wonderful job of providing you about the site and, you know, and that we've discussed over the last several months. So I'd just be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
No questions for the applicant? All right, we'll give you a chance to respond here after the hearing.
Thanks.
Okay. I assume we have people signed up to speak to this? Okay. We'll open the public hearing. As you come up to the podium, you'll see a box on the, on the top. It's, you'll be given three minutes. If you represent a group, please identify that group, and we'll give you five minutes. With one minute remaining, the light will turn to yellow, and you'll have one minute left to, for your remarks. When it turns red, I would just ask that you wrap it up as quickly as you can so we can get on to other people that wish to speak. With that, we'll turn it over to the public.
Cheryl Duffacey, followed by Louise Borre.
Good evening. My name is Cheryl Duffacey. My address is 12027 North Dickinson Drive. My family and many of our neighbors strongly oppose the recommendation to approve this development as currently proposed. We have submitted our concerns, and they were included in your staff report. I appreciate this opportunity to speak to you all tonight. We are not opposed to this facility, however, we are opposed to the second entry exit at Old Plank Road. We hope you visited our community and saw firsthand how this could negatively impact our community. The report states, "The current proposal is expected to be less than impactful from a traffic perspective than what is currently approved." We strongly disagree. North Dickinson will be used as a cut-through. You saw on the map that Kim had, we are in between Old Plank and Harrison. Customers will enter and exit from Old Plank and Harrison using our road. North Dickinson is residential with a speed limit of 25 miles per hour. Many children play here, catch the bus here, and their safety along with their own and that of my family and neighbors is of utmost concern. Our road is very narrow, and with the trucks that will be entering, pickup trucks, trailers, boats, RVs, to this facility puts us at risk, and we will lose the peaceful enjoyment of our property and our homes. The report states, "The applicant has indicated that two points of access to the site are necessary for a safety perspective, which is supported by county staff, particularly fire, rescue, and emergency services." We completely disagree. What is being protected? The self-storage facility and the customers' personal possessions within? As proposed, two points of access certainly would not protect us. The report states, "The office-zoned portion of the property was subject of a rezoning approved in 1988, which allows for an office building with access at Old Plank Road." This is true, however, an office building would not have trucks with household items, trailers, boats, et cetera, moving through our community and after normal business hours. A second entry exit permits customers to enter and exit at all hours of the day, every day. Mr. and Mrs. East do not have a second entry and exit at their current facility. Do any other storage facilities in the county have two entrances? A second entry exit in a residential area is obviously not necessary for a facility to be successful and profitable. Thank you for considering our safety and our personal and peaceful enjoyment of our
Louise Borre, followed by Doug Welch.
Good evening. I'm Louise Borre. I live on North Dickinson Drive also. Me and my husband have the first house that's beside Old Plank Road. And I'll go extremely quickly. I love the idea of having the storage there. I think it's better than an office or something like this. I just do not approve of the entrance on Old Plank. North Dickinson Drive is extremely narrow, to say the least. If two cars go by, one has to go on the side of the road to let someone else go. If we have added traffic, I don't think it will work. So that's just my intake on this. It's quick. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Doug Welch. I live at the other end of North Dickinson Drive, Harrison Road, Dickinson Drive corner. What I have to say is a reiteration of the other two speakers mostly, but I'd like to add that I think myself and my neighbors failed to recognize the changes to Cherry Road that occurred a year and a half ago would have such significant traffic impacts on our neighborhood. All the road, all the traffic that needs to flow from Harrison Road over to Plank Road and Five Mile Road now cuts through Dickinson Drive. I don't know if a recent traffic survey has been conducted of Dickinson Drive, but I can tell you, as someone who's lived there for 35 years, that our traffic has significantly increased. And as pointed out previously, Dickinson Drive is a very narrow road. And there are many, many homes on that street where the folks have more cars than they have places to park them. They park on the road. Traffic cannot pass one another as stated without one of the cars pulling on the shoulder. If it's a truck or a bus, one vehicle will have to stop absolutely. It's, it's not a good situation to bring additional truck traffic, vehicles with trailers and boats heading to the storage facility. I too welcome the storage facility to our neighborhood. I think it's a good addition, better than some uses would be. But I, I am concerned about the entrance off of Old Plank Road, and I would appreciate your entertainment of the idea that that's a bad addition to this plan. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, that's all that signed up tonight.
Thank you, Paula. Anybody else that would like to speak to this application that didn't sign up? Okay, with that, we'll give the applicant a chance to respond to questions and other comments from the public.
As you heard, the other one concern is the traffic coming out the back entrance on Old Plank. Couple comments that we have is that the estimate of 28 vehicles per day coming out that entrance, we believe is considerably high. And I guess just to reiterate what Kimberly has said is that the current zoning on the property would allow for a much higher vehicular generation in that area. So by, you know, approving the rezoning in this particular use in that area, you know, would actually, in the end, after ultimate development, limit the amount of traffic that would be traversing that, that road in that neighborhood. And as I said, we expect that the actual traffic will be, based on his experience at another facility that he owns, would be much less than the 28 that was shown by staff.
Do you know what that is?
I believe it's about 28 per day at the others, and we estimate about a quarter of that might use the back entrance.
And the 28 per day, is that based off the traffic generation manual? How did we come up with that?
No, that's just his experience at another facility he owns personally.
Is that the facility on Route 1?
Correct.
THornsburg?
Yes.
Please, Chair.
Absolutely.
Why do you feel the need to have the second entrance? If the, if the people are going to be less than 28 vehicles, why do you need the second entrance?
I guess it's just for, again, it was the emergency vehicles being able to get through in and out without having to make, you know, turn or get stuck.
Emergency vehicles are located on Route 3. They would be coming in the other entrance anyway.
But that way, they don't have to turn around and get back out. And the same thing with other vehicles entering and exiting the site.
Are they going to be the only ones with the key to the gate?
No, 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 no.
You're telling me that the reason you want the second entrance is for fire and safety?
Well, that was the first reason.
So I would think that that's the only reason you have for using the second entrance, that they would be the only people with the key to get in it.
Right, that was the first reason I was going to give you. But also, other customers can come in there with a truck or something and be able to traverse through the site without having to make turns and get stuck. And so, you know, it's, it's a convenience and a safety, and as we said, we don't expect it to be a high-volume usage. Most of the usage at these sites is passenger-vehicle type.
I would support the second entrance only if fire and rescue and the police have the key to that gate.
They would have the code to the gate.
They would be the only ones.
I, I don't know.
Otherwise, I can't support your movement anyway.
All right, I'm not sure that...
I've already talked to Mr. East. My house used to be in that area. I was there the day it tore down. And, and I'm all for the storage facility. I'm in problem with that. I think it'd be a good use of the land. But I think it's a unnecessary imposition on the residential neighborhood to have a second entrance.
And he's heard, he's heard your concern and...
May I, please? I, I do have a concern about, and the reason, one of the, the biggest reason is that a lot of our roads in Spazovania County cannot handle traffic that places generate. It might seem little, okay, 28, but when you get trucks or whatever that are going to come in that area and you got to go off the shoulder of the road, that's not good.
Agreed.
I, your facility in THornsburg is very nice. It really is, and it's very well-kept. And I, like Mr. Richardson, at this time, I do support the facility, but I do not support, I only support the second entrance for emergency vehicles. Yeah. I would have to do that, say that.
And just, you know, just to reiterate that, you know, without going through a rezoning, you know, office building, hotel, there are other uses there that would generate much more traffic and would have direct access to Old Plank Road without a gate is, you know, already currently zoned for that.
And sir, if that was to happen, I'm sure they'd have to do a whole lot in that area to improve the transportation and turning lanes.
Absolutely, Mr. Burns.
I've got the same concerns because I was on Dogwood Avenue today, as a matter of fact, and coming out, and the traffic that comes in and out there, that part of Old Plankage is so narrow, and I do think you will have, I think the residents are correct, they're going to have trailers and trucks and probably some boats and things like that. So I'm not sure exactly how critical that rear entrance is, but I have the same concerns. You want to use it for public safety vehicles only and having access, but to open it up, I think what you're going to find is more people are going to use that entrance than they're going to use your main entrance to some degree because they'll, they'll just figure it out. And Cherry Road has had an impact on that, so I've got the same concern.
Any other questions, comments? Mr. Medina?
Chair, Kimberly, correct me if I'm wrong. This, this application is scheduled to go in front of the Board of Supervisors on the 24th, correct? And any changes that we would make a request on this, would that be able to be prepared for if, if Mr. East would accept that tonight? Would that be able to be prepared for that 24th meeting, or would have to go forward as-is with a vote as-is, or could there be modifications, request for modification?
You could include recommendations into your motion, and then any changes the applicant would need to present to the Board on the 24th.
And the question the applicant would be is, is there a negative financial impact predicted if that second entrance isn't there?
Yeah, I'd have to see under that. But we've certainly take all these concerns and question on that. And I don't know if he wants to say anything tonight or just wants to think it over and...
Yeah, because my concern to make a motion would have to, would need the applicant's approval to do so if we were to modify or make a recommendation, or would that not be the case? We can make a recommendation for approval with a single access on Wright's Lane?
Correct.
Okay.
I think the, the motion that I would support would be for emergency access only. And I think that's the best path forward to resolve this issue, and I think we'd have a motion with that recommendation to it, if the, if the rest of the commissioners support that.
And it's being with the applicant as well, as I recall, that back phase would be definitely a third phase or second phase perhaps, with the first five going on, then possibly the rear, and then the three further down the west. So there is a chance that this may never even be, that entrance may never be put in. However, I agree that, I believe that if we make that recommendation, I could support that recommendation.
I would like to make one request that if, you know, if the applicant does agree to that and that is how we proceed, that the, you know, the turn lane be able to be removed from the proffers because at that point it wouldn't be necessary.
That's correct.
With the one caveat, I believe that would be correct, but I'd want to hear from fire and safety on that just to make sure that they can maneuver in and out, which I think they can.
Right.
That would be my only concern with that, but I, I think you're correct.
May I add something to that?
Absolutely.
Not only that, I believe that the owner or whomever, the manager or whomever would certainly have a key also.
Right.
And if it created a problem, I'm sure that the residents would not mind, you know, some, occasionally, we have a problem, so we do need to open it.
Somebody got stuck.
That's right. Somebody got stuck. We don't want that to happen. But however, I, I believe that that could work, you know, in that area there, because I really, as I stated, you know, it means a whole lot when you look at a facility, like I look on Route 1 at the THornsburg area, and see how well-kept it is and how groomed it is. groomed it is. And I certainly, uh, support the facility, but the concern is that.
Understood.
Is that a motion, Michael?
Yes, it is.
I'll, I'll second it.
If I could have clarification, the motion is...
The motion is to approve with the recommendation to remove customer use of the access lane, excuse me, the access point off of Old Plank, and to limit that access to, um, the owner, occasional use as needed, and a fire and rescue with the caveat of removing the, the turn lane, assuming that the fire and rescue are okay with that.
Can I have a second on that?
Second.
Oh, you seconded it already?
I need a second.
Very good. Um, go ahead and vote, please. The motion is unanimous with the conditions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, let's see, next on our agenda is the work session, zoning update for parking, loading, and stacking.
Good evening. Uh, tonight's work session is focused on an ongoing zoning update that we've been working through for the last, uh, couple of years. As you know, uh, much of the zoning amendments that we have discussed prior have been able to been bundled and moved through the public hearing process. I think we have twenty-seven or twenty-eight divisions and sections of the code that have already moved through the public hearing process and, and been approved. Um, but this is, uh, we're kind of getting to the point where we're wrapping up the zoning ordinance update at this point. And, uh, tonight, we're moving forward, uh, to present you a concept draft, uh, regarding off-street parking, loading, and stacking. Um, I did wanna start the work session by saying we do have Mr. Rick Roberson with the zoning office here this evening, uh, for any additional questions that may have. Typically, the zoning office, um, is enforcing and interpreting the, uh, parking, loading, and stacking ordinance, so...
Mr. Chairman, with that, could Mr. Robertson, Roberson come up and, if we have questions? Because it seems as though that planning staff, and I know you're ready to present this, but however, it seems that many of these issues, it's not going to be with planning, it's gonna be zoning, and so...
That's correct.
And I think that, uh, if, you know, Mr...
Do my best, Ms. Carr.
Thank you so much.
I could say, from my perspective, on the planning end, I have three quick slides to get you through a overview of the amendments before you. And like I said, uh, Rick and I can, uh, tag-team this if we need to. So first, um, to focus on the off-street parking requirements, these are, uh, parking requirements that come forth, um, when a particular use is proposed. So if you were to come through with a retail sales establishment, based on your square footage, you may be required to have X number of parking spaces, uh, to accommodate that use. Um, an overview of the amendments before you this evening, um, and I'll give a summary of this, is, uh, one of the first things that we did in the off-street parking section was to correct administrative enforcement duty references. What you'll see in the draft is there's numerous instances where there's a reference to director or director of planning. Um, we've correct that to point to the correct, uh, administrator of that and enforcer would be the zoning administrator. So that's really the correction that you've seen throughout that document. Um, and so we've removed that vagueness and an incorrect, uh, target on that. Secondly, we've proposed to remove provisions addressed elsewhere within the zoning ordinance. Um, there are parking lot lighting, um, as well as vehicle stacking, uh, standards within the off-street parking section. We have an outdoor lighting section separate in the code. We also have a stacking section, which I'll be discussing briefly, which is a whole different section of the code. So there was really no reason to have lighting and stacking addressed within off-street parking when it's already addressed elsewhere. So we've taken those out and, and, and left them where they, they're properly located within the code. It gets rid of ambiguity, overlap, conflict, um, duplication throughout the code, uh, trying to make this simpler. Um, the next thing that we propose would be to expand provisions for potentially reducing parking to apply to all uses. And I know this language, what I just said, kinda sounds a little bit, um, confusing, but what we have in the code currently is there is a ability to reduce parking, um, if you're in proximity to a public parking lot or an additional parking lot where you have an agreement from a nearby, uh, parking lot owner that basically says, yes, I have excess capacity, you can utilize that. Within the parking ordinance, that applies currently, that reduction, only to places of worship. We've left the place of worship ability to do that, but we've also expanded to all other uses as well. So there's, a, any other use has the ability to potentially reduce their parking requirement if they have buy-in from a, a neighbor with excess parking or, um, a public parking lot that there's an agreement to, so...
How do you determine the excess parking? How is that verified or determined?
Through the zoning office.
But, but, so I would imagine somebody would come in with a site plan with a, um, calculation on the existing use, and then some portion of that applied to a new use? Is that how that would be handled? Do you, my...
Typically, what would happen is you'd have a set of plans that come in, and based on, based on the, uh, on the requested use, we do our calculations to how many parking spaces they may have. In some cases, they are short on parking spaces. But I use this as an example, you have business A, they may own lot business B as well, but because it's a separate parcel, he says, well, I've got X amount of parking here, I have a joint parking agreement with this parcel, whether they own it or not, or whoever owns it, that allows them to, to make up that additional parking.
And, and that would be verified through zoning?
Yes, sir. We have inspectors that go out and, and verify that that parking's there, and then we also have that in form of a written agreement.
Uh, if I may, I have a question. You, you, uh, mentioned, uh, places of worship?
Yes.
Can we revisit that?
Yeah, absolutely. Um, like I said, currently within the code, um, and I'm gonna go directly to it, so I have...
Page five.
I can specifically reference this. If we're looking at page five, first of all, um, you can see on page five, the place of worship, the parking standard has been struck. This, and, and that's actually getting to my next point about clarifying and organizing the code provisions where needed. Place of worship was removed because it's, alphabetically, it's not in line. So what we ended up doing was took the place of worship parking standard and moved that to page nine, where it sits under personal service establishment, um, for alphabet, alphabetical reasons. That's, so that, we basically moved it, just so it's easy to flow through the document. As it relates to what I was referring to with what Rick was addressing, um, if you look on, I'm gonna reference here, uh, let's see, page number twelve, near the bottom, there is a note number three. Note number three states that the number of, of spaces required, thus required, may be reduced by up to fifty percent for a place of worship. If the place of worship is located within five hundred feet of any public parking lot or any commercial parking lot where sufficient spaces are available by permission of the owners without charge during the time of service to make up additional spaces required. So what we did, as I had, as I had stated, is we've extended that, instead of just applying the place of worship, we've extended it to all uses. So any, any and all uses have the ability to potentially buy into having excess parking nearby. Zoning office is able to, to agree that there is excess parking and there is buy-in from an adjacent owner. So any and all uses, including places of worship, would be able to potentially reduce their parking spaces. The benefit of that is, if there is excess nearby, it isn't, it isn't essentially maintaining that access by, and also adding a full load of parking for this new user. Um, there's benefits for reducing parking spaces, um, potentially more buildable area for developer, instead of having a surface parking lot, um, less impervious surfaces, uh, potentially more landscape vegetation. There's just more opportunity on a site if you could potentially reduce your, your parking. And, and that really is, i- it's really an option. Um, if there is a need to, to build out, we don't have a set maximum on our parking. These are all based on set minimums, so I think there's, there's some flexibility in there, and it's just more equally distributed to all uses.
When you have a shared parking agreement, is that agreement recorded?
Supposed to be, yes, sir.
And that protects the county should one, should ownership change hands, that agreement is, goes...
Then that, that travels with the property.
Very good. Thank you.
We do require verification, uh, that they have deemed recorded by instrument number. They use, it's usually a pretty per-functionary action we go through. Sir.
Rick, I have a question. Spotswood Church is a good example.
Prime example. I was, I was thinking that as we were going through this.
Because over the years, they've basically, as they built out, some, they've acquired property as they go, but there's at times they didn't have property.
That's right.
For example, right across the street, they utilize all that parking.
They have a very workable relationship as well.
Yes, they do.
But, so they, but, and they have a agreement in place.
That's right.
That, that, I don't go there, but my understanding is they have agreement. But that would be really a good example.
Right. They have trained traffic personnel out there. Anybody's been down Lafayette Boulevard on a Sunday. And that's a prime example of a lot of businesses that are closed on Sunday, that parking space is sitting there empty. So that's how that agreement works out for them well. So, we, we found that to, uh, work with a lot of people out here, be, because they, you know, they complain, well, I don't have enough parking, or whatever it may be, and if they can come to an agreement with their neighbor out there, and so, and that, we're, we're good with that. That, that allows us to keep our impervious surface down, so to speak. You know, we're all into this green stamp, you know, green idea of things, you know? So if we can, if we can decrease that, that's a way to do it.
And, and the other thing is, even outside of impervious surface, um, even if it is impervious surface, it potentially gives a business the ability to add additional square footage to a building that would otherwise be in a surface parking lot.
Right.
And, and, and that's especially problematic when you have excess parking, that's just sitting there collecting dust, really. I mean, I, I think every, there are examples of parking lots that are extremely popular and, and they're filled all the time, but there are certainly examples of large shopping centers, and that's one of the things I think we'll be getting to next, um, regarding the reduction of minimum parking space standards for retail, sales, and shopping centers, is that there are numerous shopping plazas where there's football fields worth of parking that usually are never filled with anything. There, there's nothing sitting there. You may get, uh, holiday traffic, and, and, and to that point, I get back to the idea that these are minimum standards, we're not setting a maximum here.
That's right.
Um, and I think that's, you know, in the interest of trying to be flexible with the parking standards and, and, and kind of in, in the spirit of what we've been doing, um, I thought that, you know, we think that this is a fairly good move to potentially reduce those a little bit, um, especially as it relates to the large shopping centers, where you have excess, uh, capacity often. And, you know, really, that, that could be, that could promote out parcel developments, um, especially out front, you know, your Route Threes, Two-O-eights, Route One, where you have really large fields of parking, instead of having those fields going, extending all the way out, you know, and, and the building set back hundreds of feet from Route One, you may be able to put a, a retail sales establishment or a restaurant or a car wash out there. Um, so that's really the goal of that.
I think if there was any business-friendly decisions that had been made in the zoning ordinance of late, this is probably one of the best ones out here.
I would completely agree with that. You know, it's, I was sitting here thinking of all the reasons it reduces the cost of development, because parking lots are expensive.
Well, that has a long-term impact, as I said. Uh, Mr. Thompson, tell you, you know, we have stormwater calculations here, are based on open space parking out there, all that's figured in. We get the opportunity to reduce it hand in hand, the way we're proposing. You know, that reduces our stormwater impact as well, our, our footprint for stormwater, uh, improvements out here as well.
May I ask?
Absolutely, Ms. Carr.
Um, Rick, uh, absolutely, I agree with Mr. Barnes on Spotswood, and also the Catholic Church on Two-O-eight, they share with, um, Found and Sons also, just as, um, Spotswood, uh, they park in the Covenant, uh, Funeral Home, and it works out well. But do you have problems elsewhere that maybe people are parking on the street for, uh, services or anything? Do you have complaints?
Well, parking on the street is problematic in any location, where, you know, Spotsylvania is certainly not exempt from that. Uh, parking on the street, uh, is, is normally handled by the Sheriff's Department, and if they find that it's blocking traffic, Mr. Smith might wanna comment on this, if we find that they're blocking traffic, blocking a mailbox, or a fire hydrant, or somebody's driveway, then the Sheriff's Department will take the appropriate, if they're parked too far out in the road, or whatever it may be. But typically, if they're not obstructing traffic out there, we allow, most of the homeowners' associations address those issues.
So therefore, if there is a complaint, it would go to the sheriff's office, that's where they would complain, if they have a complaint?
That's correct. Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Uh, if I may make a comment? Uh, I have gotten a complaint about, uh, people parking on the street, going across the street, particularly on Route Three, and, and I don't know why, but the, the mosque is located over there in that, over in that, uh, parking, uh, parking lot where the Lowes and all the rest of those shops are at.
Mm-hmm.
And I don't know why they park on the other side of the road and those other places and then run across the road. Uh, I, I, I'm just wondering, 'cause I would think that that parking lot would be shared by these folks at the shopping center?
Apparently not. I don't, I don't know for what reason they, they would or wouldn't be, but that, at that point right there, there would be a private agreement. If they're parked and they're shopping in some of this parking lot, they have control over that, that's a civil matter. They need to have, enforce their own parking on, on private parking. My office clearly lacks the authority to do that.
Well, I'm just curious why these folks have to go across the street.
I don't know. I can certainly look into that if you'd like.
That would be great.
All right.
'Cause I don't want none of them getting run over in the road. I mean, that'd be ridiculous.
Especially to that one.
Particularly since there's so much parking on that side of the street anyway.
Mm-hmm.
That'd be great. Thank you.
I'll look into it.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
I had a question about the impervious surface, and just so I have an understanding of it. So, one of the things that I heard you speaking about was reducing the required, requirements for parking for a parcel, commercial developments, so there's not just a whole bunch of, um, impervious surfaces out there, and then possibly putting an out parcel on there. If the out parcel has the same exact footprint as the parking lot that you've just removed, isn't your impervious surface equal?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay.
And, and I think that, that's kinda what I was trying to get at, too, was, it's, it's kind of, there's two potential benefits. One of them is more of an environmental one, where you have more, um, pervious surfaces, more landscape planting, I guess, less upfront investment. You're not putting it in asphalt and, and subgrade material. And the other one is, you potentially have the ability to have more impervious surface, but instead of asphalt parking spot that may not get used, you have more retail sales floor, you have more restaurant sales floor, there's more building there, more rentable I guess, then, moving on, the last point on the off-street parking, um, and this is something that's, that's fairly new. Typically, what we've had in the off-street parking is we have a, a standard dimension for your parking spaces. It's a universal dimension that's basically supposed to be a catch-all for all vehicles, whether it be small meaning or large. What we've proposed at this time, it is a concept, um, we're still trying to work it through even with zoning enforcement, and we're trying to get everyone's feedback. Um, and obviously, what we've done typically with these type of reviews is after going through the work session process, we open it up for public comment, um, and, and additional feedback. But a fairly new concept, we've looked at, instead of having just one single required parking dimension as a catch-all for all vehicles, that we would add a provision for motorcycle parking dimensions, compact vehicle parking dimensions, as well as oversized vehicle parking dimensions, that could be used as a percentage of your, to, to meet a percentage of your parking requirement. On the side of motorcycles and compact vehicles, obviously, it doesn't take up too much space, so it's less asphalt. It also allows motorcycles to not necessarily park in with other vehicles, it allows compacts not to park against oversized pickup trucks and try to have to back out into the parking lane. We did this as an option. Again, these are not requirements. We, we basically gave, we rationed out, I believe it's ten percent for motorcycles, twenty percent for oversized, and twenty percent for the compact vehicles. You can... You can essentially have the option to do those alternative spaces as opposed to doing all universal size. It adds up to basically 50% of your parking lot. Could be an alternate sized vehicle space. It is not required, we've presented this as an alternative to doing always universal parking all the time.
Mr. Chairman, just from a public safety standpoint, yeah, that's probably going to be a nightmare for the sheriff. Because he's probably going to get calls all the time from those property owners about cars parked in the motorcycle place and motorcycles parked somewhere else. I can just, I can just see his phone ringing constantly about that. I just don't know if I agree with that.
I understand if, I mean, and, and that's what we're here for. If there's a concern that there'll be enhanced enforcement problems, then maybe it's not broken, we don't, we don't have to fix it. One thing I would say, even within universal spaces, certain uses, like you go to a Lowe's, I've seen just from personal experience numerous times where a truck with a trailer will take out four universal spaces. Or you'll have the guy with the expensive car who parks diagonally across multiple spaces. So it does happen in any instance, but if this is a threat of additional problems, then maybe it's not worth going down this road, and I understand that.
Well, I, I'd like to make a comment too. I can just see the guy with the big truck, and you've got this parking lot here, and you've got six spaces for him and 12 for those guys. And all six of his spaces are used up. So he's going to end up taking two spaces of the other ones or not parking at all. Yeah, I, I agree with, with Howard, I don't like that.
Okay.
I can tell you from experience, because the office complex I work at, there is reserved spaces for oversized vehicles. And most of the time, it's anything but oversized vehicles. And I happen to drive an oversized vehicle and I can't find a spot. So my experience is with that, when you, when you set aside compact spaces or oversized, it's really not used that way. The biggest impact I see is in parking spaces where they reduce down the dimensions of parking spaces to meet lead requirements or something like that. And a lot of, I guess I would say, state or federal facilities have smaller parking dimensions to meet these lead standards. And you're banging, you can't even get out of your vehicle. That'd be my biggest concern, is if we ever get into that area, that we'd be very careful.
Okay, absolutely.
But I, I agree with, with my colleagues that to, to ration out different spaces is, to me, counterproductive. It doesn't work in my experience.
Okay, absolutely. And you know, that's the lovely thing about these work sessions. We can present a concept. At this time, it really is a concept. If it's the interests of the planning commission,
Yeah.
we, we could certainly just go back to the way it's been, and, and that's a better option.
Well, I, I would encourage you to continue to look for good ideas.
Okay.
But, yeah. I, I've got one more question, on page two, and I'm not a lawyer, and, but I play one on TV, I guess. Subparagraph I or paragraph I, the very last sentence, this is no plan shall be approved, which reduces the number of parking spaces below the minimum number required by this article, but yet further in the article, you give the zoning administrator leeway to adjust the minimum number of spaces. Is that contrary to, is that language conflicting?
If I may be, if I can speak on that, I, I first drew attention to that as well. The idea there, I think, was to say, parking is parking, the minimum requirements are this. But it gives some latitude to the zoning administrator up here saying, well, parking is parking, and it looks great in, on, on paper. But in reality here, you know, I, if for whatever reason it may be, it may be a contour line, it may be a slope issue that where it shows on paper, parking, when you go over there, you find out you got a ditch and you lost three spaces. So I think, I think that gives the zoning administrator some additional authority to this. I know, and...
My, my position is to give you that, to give the zoning administrator that flexibility. I'm just wondering if that particular sentence is contrary to what we're trying to do.
Mr. Chairman, I, I think what, and we've run this in the past, what you design and when you go to build it, it doesn't quite work. Something, someone didn't take something in account and what it does. And, and I agree with you, and I think we just need to make sure that language covers it. But it's specifically the zoning administrator taking in a consideration because the design doesn't meet really what's out there in the field, and he can make an adjustment. But that's all he can do.
That's right.
You know, there's a limit to it. But then we focus on that. So it's not like, oh, we only need so many spaces. No, we can't get those extra spaces here because of whatever, or something.
Well, I used the hotel down beside the, what is that, the Steak and Shake? The hotel that they built there. Well, when they did the parking calculations on that, they did them correctly. They, but after the fact, fire and rescue went in there and said, look, we've got, we've got, we've got some meters here, we have our, we have our hydrants here, and we want these four spaces here. For if there's an issue, blang, blang, and they went in and yellow parked and striped it out. Well, that made them in, when they went to refinance that, that structure there, then they found theirself in conflict with the parking calculations. All of a sudden, they were four spaces short and couldn't figure out why. You know, that took a lot of backtracking to figure out. That would be a prime example of giving the zoning administrator the authority to make that decision. On paper, originally, you had this amount. When we did the, when we did the final inspection, it showed all the correct parking spaces. But here, some year or two later, the four parking spaces just disappeared.
Which, but does that sentence in paragraph I, or is it I? It does, is that a conflict is my question?
This, this is, I guess, at this point, because I, this is, this would be my response on this, is as part of this process, I have to pass this language through county attorney review for, for legal clarity and to remove any vagueness. If we have missed something in terms of clarity and now let the points come up, I would suggest that we would be able to work that out with the county attorney's office and make sure that this is clear and defensible document, if that is a problem. I mean, if, if in just reading it, it comes up as a conflict, I'm, it's kind of skipping my head at this point. But I'd be happy to take this, all this language will go through county attorney before we go to public hearing. So we'll make sure to be on that.
Very good.
Absolutely.
Can you come up with, may I, please? Off, add off-street loading provisions to address industrial flex uses and public schools. The schools have really got problems. Yeah, in the street and wherever with parent pickup.
Yeah, and in, in, in the situation of public, I guess, we had, are, are we good with off-street parking?
Well, I was just going to ask, are we good with that? Because I think you're moving right into that, okay. Go ahead.
Okay, so as it relates to off, off-street loading, I guess, from Ms. Carter's points about the industrial flex and the public schools in off-street loading, at least if you look at the off-street loading, off-street loading standards tables, there actually was no provision for public school. There was one for private school, but no one for public school. I'd have to defer to zoning on how public schools have historically been handled in terms of loading and what's been required. But what we saw when we reviewed this is, we have a standard for private school, but no standard listed for public school. It was time to address public schools, at least within this document. So it's pretty clear and equal amongst the schools that they have the exact same standard. I'd have to defer about the existing problems with the public schools and hopefully...
Ms. Carter, I think you're right. There will never be enough off-street, off-street loading or stacking spaces for schools. I don't care, they're building brand-new out here, and there's never enough. The Robert E. Lee Elementary School right beside the Merchant Square Building over here, that's a prime example. That's only a snapshot during the day for an hour. In this particular case, they found the Merchant Square Building to be a, a place to park, if you will, for, to, to go pick up their children. Normally, we just require, well, actually, we, for pickup and, and of children, that is usually designated, the school finds that space. We have it out front for bus loading, but for private pickup and, and, and parking, those were all basically for Robert E. Lee Elementary, they were there prior to the zoning ordinance.
It's just that it looks like 95 at commuter time.
Oh, yeah.
When they get off. That's what's happening, you know, at the schools. But I do see maybe flexibility there, that could really help if maybe you all could, you know, try to work with the schools to say, maybe we, we need to look at it this way or this way, and maybe we can create more, you know, because it's...
Well, you know, increasingly, more and more people don't want their children on the bus. It's that simple, you know?
That's exactly right.
I, I find that real difficult for me to, well, how much loading they're going to need for pickup, you know, for private pickup and, and parking out there. So that's something we can certainly address at site plan when, when new schools come through here.
Yes, yes, absolutely, when new schools come on.
One thing I might suggest as well is just looking at the, the loading standard. Currently, for public and what is proposed for private, well, private and public schools is, currently, they're at the basically least required loading space standard, at, at standard F. There is potential, maybe we'll, we'll meet with the public schools, see if maybe that should be upgraded to something a little bit higher than what's currently there. Right now, it's standard F, it's, it's basically the least requirement for loading spaces. So we can certainly look into that.
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I had a question. Jacob, one of the things, as you're looking at both off-street parking and loading and stuff like that, another issue is the travel lanes, that's the whole thing. Because you can, you can fool and mess with the spaces however you want, but the travel lanes are really, really important.
That's where they're queuing up to get in.
What they'll, I guarantee you, and what they'll try to do is to get the parking spaces you're requiring, they'll, they'll squeeze those travel lanes in, and that's what really happened. That's why, for example, the VRE station, when that was designed, commuters are getting, they want to get there, get parked, and when they get off, they want to get out, and you want to have a wide enough travel lanes. But that's just one example. But you want to make sure those lanes, and even with the new school, like Robert E. Lee, that's an old school, there's not, a whole lot can be done there. But even on the newer ones, if they have a good travel lane where, you know, and it's wide enough, that kind of gets to the...
Massaphonics Church, Massaphonics High School, they've got a, a, a long turning lane in there that accommodates it, but I think Mr. Barnes hit it. They want in, they want a place to park, and they want it quick. And they're impatient with each other when they get in that queue out there.
We could certainly look at those, those aisle widths.
Yeah, and those, those, the travel lane widths are just, and just one other thing, it's kind of not exactly related to, but just while we're looking at it. Because it's not really on the street, but for example, take Four Mile Fort, you know, where Morton's is. And when you take us to a shopping center like that, of course, the fire marshal when he comes in, he, he lists everything as a, you know, parking, so a fire zone. But Morton, for example, now what happens to Harry homeowner who wants to unload his equipment to go into the door and see, does another, a lot of times, depending on the use, you may have one little space that you need where people can offload real quick and that, and designate it. I noticed that, and what we're doing is, we're very rigid about, no, it's, it's sacred ground, you can't do there, and you can't park that. And I'm talking about parking, I'm talking about unloading and loading equipment. And it's, you know, and I've had previous talks with fire chiefs, I can't believe you need all of it. You know, if you have a fully involved one, people, they're not going to be there anyway, they'll probably end up leaving. But that, that's just something to keep in, in mind. Because depending on the use, there might be something, and it needs approval. And that's something maybe would be in conjunction with, you know, fire and rescue's okay with it and not to cut them out and...
Fast food is another prime example of not having enough loading space for customers, you know? Most of the time, they're in there, but they're only there and they're, they're gone. You know, so it's not, it's not like they take up those spaces and they stay there. And they hit, yes, they're inconvenient for every user there at the time, they drop their load and they're gone. You know, so parking over, parking over, loading spaces parked over parking spaces. Get a lot of folks that want to do it that way.
If I may, I'm going to make another statement. I believe it's Wilderness Elementary, at Old Sixth thirteen? Brock Road, is it Brock Road? I can't remember the name of it. That place is a nightmare. They've got cars stacked up for a quarter of a mile on both sides of the street. And if you come there at the right time, because the way the laws are in the parking lots, people step right out in front of your cars, kids and parents walk right out in the middle of the street without looking.
You know, and with all due respect to the schools, I will say this for, in their defense, you know, they, when they're trying to get those kids out of there, they don't want to have to take children that are being parent picked up to this end of the school. And they got all the action going where their loading buses here or whatever it may be. And they're trying so hard to make sure that the, the children are being picked up by the parents, it's a safety thing, and sometimes that leads to a delay. That truly does, and it causes those backups. I think it's just a bigger problem than having more than just a lane or whatever it may be. I mean, you got a middle school child or elementary child out there, I want to be able to pick up my kid, and I don't want to have to drive the other end of the parking lot to, to find them standing down there, you know, with, with a group of kids by themselves or minimum supervision. So they do try to keep that together.
Well, I, I didn't mention that as a proposal for some solution, it just, I'm just making the point that that's, and, and because of the way the state law is about people walking in parking lots, it's, it's universal. I can't believe people would step out in traffic anywhere without stopping and looking. I just can't get that. But there, I've seen them do that there. I've been through there and had to stop in the middle of the street because they stepped right off the curb. And what if there's somebody behind me?
Well, at Battlefield, they, they don't, they don't have the buses and the pickup on the same end. Ones at one and ones at the other. They have a wonderful system. But they just, it's just that it's just so over, it's beginning to come on to levels, you know, road.
And those design standards back in those days
I know.
were certainly different from what we're dealing with in these days, you know, so...
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, for me. They've got a question that you brought up about, or you brought up a point about, you know, combining public and private schools on here. And then also going back to public schools and getting some feedback, and maybe, you know, they need to go from standard, you can say this, but to E, or something like that. In deciding that, I would encourage you to, to reach out to some of the private schools.
Absolutely.
Just to see if, hey, this works out well for us, let's separate these two potentially. And you being E, we're working an F, here's our case for that, just in case.
That's reasonable.
Okay.
Sure. Otherwise, within off-street loading, just to step back, as I did with the off, as we did with the off-street parking, again, we've redirected the reference from director of planning to zoning administrator. We have removed provisions addressed elsewhere in the zoning ordinance. In, in off-street loading, I believe it's, it's actually outdoor lighting that, that, for whatever reason, appears in off-street loading, we've removed that so it can be addressed properly in outdoor lighting section, which we have brought to the planning commission prior for a work session for consideration. We've enforced, introduced enforceable code provisions to avoid onsite traffic circulation conflicts resulting from off-street loading. And I think that gets to a lot of the points that specifically tonight were aimed at public schools, but issues where you have stacking and loading that are backing up in the streets, or it's conflicting with pedestrian movement, or it's conflicting with other circulations of vehicles. So we've tried to address that with some code language that we can cite to try to justify why we're trying to avoid these issues in the first place. But to the points this evening, we will certainly look again at, you know, if, if the schools are a big concern, and, and I can even see it at Robert E. Lee, just looking out from these, you know, from Merchant Square Building, you look out at certain, certain times of the day, and the traffic's just parked on Brock Road, it's parked there. So we'll certainly look into that. Lastly, regarding off-street stacking, all of these sections of code are fairly similar. Again, we did the planning director and director references to zoning administrator. We removed provisions addressed elsewhere in the zoning ordinance. We've, again, introduced enforceable code provisions to try to avoid future conflicts with stacking of vehicles. One thing that I would say is new is fuel pumps are fairly standard type of use that you would see vehicle stacking, people waiting in line for a fuel pump. We have proposed to, to add a fairly basic standard, which would basically say that at a minimum, you at least have to have a space for the car at the pump and one additional space backed up, basically waiting in line. Oftentimes, when a, a gas station's fairly full, you'll see at least one car stacked up waiting. From time to time, you see more than that. I wouldn't say that's overly typical, but we did want to put in a basic standard for that. And I don't know if, if Rick has any additional comments on that. Other than that, there's really no, no... Other than that, there's really no, no other, other proposals before you this evening.
I'm, I'm not finding that to be problematic for the most part, so... You do get some people in line that won't move at all, you know, it could be three people in front, they're not gonna move. My wife being one, I'm a lover dearly, mind you, but, uh, that's not problematic for the most part, for zoning.
Yeah.
I have seen the gas stations all boxed up like that, but it's, it's, it's a rare occurrence.
Certain times of the day.
I mean, there are certain gas stations that is just very popular.
Busy, and some of them look like they're dead.
And some of them, there's nobody there, but that's not an all-day or everyday occurrence.
Absolutely.
So, uh, thank you.
Now, um, may I, uh, please, have, uh, have you all checked on the, um, you have a Wawa at across from Cosner, and then you have a car wash, you know, there, and the traffic is going and backed up? You know, uh, I, the car wash, and then you got the, like I said, you got the vacuum, you know, where they're doing that, then you got your, uh... And it's wonderful to have it all together, but I see a lot of backup and congestion and people not knowing where to go in that area.
This is, what, at Cosner, you said?
Across from Cosner, yes. Mm-hmm.
Wow, yeah, that's a pretty busy Wawa there.
And you got the Wawa, and it's a pretty busy car wash, you know, and everything's there, and you got traffic. And, and now we got a, um, uh, cookout coming, you know? And it's all just bundling it up there, you know, together. And with the Wawa there and the car wash, it's, I don't know, how are we gonna address that problem that's there?
Other than expanding stacking requirements, which is ultimately going to cut into potential parking spaces or some other thing on the site, wayfinding signs may, may help somewhat. I don't, you know, for, for people, especially if you have traffic coming off I-95, which may not necessarily know the area or the, the location. It's great because they're coming to spend money, but, uh, if they don't know the location, they may, I mean, you have confused drivers out there. Wayfinding sign may be helpful, um, but other than that, I'm not sure.
I'm not coming off of 95, but I'm getting a little older, so maybe that's why I get mixed up.
Well, you got Wawa there, which is a busy corner Wawa, and then you've got a $3 car wash right beside it.
Exactly.
They got a product that's hot and it sells, and it, and it generates a lot of traffic, a lot of traffic down there.
And we, we're crowded more in there, you know?
Rick, I hope we don't go back to Huddn Even. You remember those days?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Gas wars where they're blocked up down the road there.
I remember Huddn Even.
I don't remember that.
Mr. Chairman, I had one question. The only thing I'd, I'd talk about, there, there's a balance here. And we can all pick out places where everything is not working. But at the same time, if we do go overboard and we require the, just the, the more parking stacking space we require means more of a footprint, which means more impervious service, which means it costs more money.
Yes, it does.
I mean, everything about it. So there's kind of a, there's a happy medium or balance here. I don't think you'll, the, the problems that are already out there, they're out there, you're not gonna resolve, do them, but we want to be careful that we don't, not a, you know, we don't get too foolish with expanding.
Absolutely not.
And I, and I, I think, and, and what guides that is what the whole premise of this zoning update has been, which is to be more flexible and regulatory, if you will.
Business friendly is the term.
Oh, definitely.
So in that sense, we're, we're trying to do this wisely, but, uh, yeah, we will definitely consider that. I, I don't want to overbuild sites or overrequire things and, and, and overburden the development and, and site design, so...
Mr. Chairman, real quick, on, on the fuel, I keep, the, the fuel pump, uh, paragraph there, the addition there with the fuel pumps having stacking, at least one stacking, I think, is, is that really two? Because your pump is going to be going one direction and one the other direction, so again, you're adding a bigger footprint. So it's one.
It's, 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 yeah, it's, it's two sides, so you have, you have one at the pump on this side, one at the pump on this side, and then you have one behind each of those. So I guess if you look at 360 degrees around the pump, you have four spa, four, four spaces, if you will, that will be essentially reserved. And the nice thing about that is typically, I think that's all generally going, or at least mostly, gonna fit underneath the canopy of the, the gas awning as it is. I don't think it's really gonna extend too far out into the travel lane.
Then you have, you're talking about two pumps, one on each side, then a lot of them coming in here, they're dual pumps, one up front, one to back.
Well, there's that.
You're, you're putting mirror aid, you know? So we try to be cognizant of that. We tru, we truly do.
That's all I have this evening. I do appreciate your feedback. Thank you very much.
Yeah, you don't need any action from us. Nope.
No, just feedback. We appreciate it.
Not the feedback, that's a, yeah, but I think you hit it on the head, that we need to be friendly.
And still be safe.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Just as an editorial comment, I guess, I went through, the first thing I looked for was make sure we're treating public and private exactly the same throughout this, and I think you've done a pretty good job with that, but, uh, I just want to make sure we're putting everybody to the same standard.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, appreciate that.
Yep.
Any new business we want to discuss this evening? Any, I guess, public comment, we're all set. I'll take a motion to adjourn if there's anything else.
Don't move.
Second.
Go ahead, vote please, and I trust will be unanimous.
That's right, that's what Mr. Yakovas said.
Very good.
Mr. Yakovas?
I want my $2.